All right, being six thirty, I will call to order this organizational meeting of the city council. I do not serve on the city council, I am the city manager and attend all meetings. Having said that, as the organizational meeting, I facilitate until you all elect a chair. So the first item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance and Tim Barrett will lead us.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is instructions on exiting the building in case of emergency. For those in the room, if there's an emergency in the building, you can go out the rear of the auditorium on the left or right side and then turn left or right to get outside. For those participating remotely, thank you for joining us. If you have comments on any item on the agenda, you can turn your camera on and the chair will call on you. Or you can indicate that you would like to make a comment in the chat and I will have the chair calling you. Other than that, we are not monitoring the chat for content. Item three on our agenda is agenda review, any additions, changes, or deletions from the agenda?
Did we get the proposed agenda for the March seventeenth meeting?
You definitely did not.
Well, is, would that?
Need to add that?
Yes, could we add that?
I don't know why I have such a block and putting that on the agenda. Can we add that after item fourteen? No, thirteen?
Thirteen A?
Yep. And then I would, I sent you all an email yesterday. I would like to respectfully request that you add another thirteen, between thirteen and fourteen agenda item on the police chief recruitment process. I will give you a briefing on that recruitment process and ask you to appoint a counselor to participate. Seeing some head nods.
Yes.
Any other changes or additions? I would, because there are two changes, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Elizabeth, second by Tim, all those in, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Comments or questions from the public on things not on the agenda? Seeing none in the room and none online, we will keep going. So the big item, under section thirteen, three oh three of our city charter, you, your body is to elect a council chair, vice chair, and clerk to serve for this town meeting year from tonight through the public hearing on the FY twenty seven budget. We'll open the floor to discussion for our motions.
Can we make nominations?
Sure can.
I would nominate that we keep all three in the same position they are in, which is Tim as chair, Andrew as vice chair, and Michael as secretary.
Is that a?
It's a nomination.
I'll second that.
Okay, so that is a motion.
It's a motion.
Seconded by Elizabeth. Any discussion? Anyone eager to serve? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Are unanimous, and I will turn this over to Chair Barrett, thank you.
Thank you very much, Jesse. As the chair, I just want to tell you that I have my executive orders here that I'm about to tell you. We're gonna, the first order is that we're gonna increase the city council stipend by ten X retroactive to two thousand sixteen. And second, I'm establishing a Department of Municipal Efficiency dome and hereby laying off the other four city counselors. I hereby levy a ten percent tariff on all imports from Williston. A toll booth will be erected at the entrance to the airport, collecting entrance fee for South Burlington. And a new cryptocurrency, Timcoin, is hereby established and will be the only legal tender in the city. And all these orders are effective April first.
Tim, you didn't fire the climate actions manager.
Excuse me?
You didn't fire the climate actions manager.
I can hear what he said.
You didn't fire the climate action?
Oh, no, no, that's sorry, that's not in here, sorry.
And did you say Timmy Coin?
Timcoin.
I like Timmy Coin.
Timcoins, yeah. Effective April first, that's the key word, thank you very much. That was a moment of levity. Bad humor, I know. So moving on to item six, which is counselors announcements and city managers report. Andrew, do you want to go first?
Um, sure, um, maybe just first congratulate you, Tim, and Elizabeth on the election and Tim congratulate you on being chair again. So, and maybe congratulations to us all on having a, um, a city budget. And thank you, Jesse, and thank you all the great staff that, that passed with a, a nice wide margin. So I think that's a real stamp of approval for everything that, that we've been doing. I was certainly really happy to see that happen. So for my announcements, I attended a Safe Roots to School Task Force meeting where we continued the progress in identifying, you know, obstacles. And we're kind of moving on to the next two schools, you know, we do Chamberlain and we're gonna move on to Orchard and Rick Marcot. And we worked out, um, you know, the opportunities to meet with parents, working on a survey to send to parents, we're gonna collate, you know, collect and collate all that data and do kind of, um, a, a mapping job similar to what we did for, for Chamberlain with a report to, uh, you know, identify the obstacles to biking, rolling, and walking safely to school. So that was a big part of the meeting. Um, we also, uh, you know, discussed our decisions around the lighting, which people kind of, you know, understood as we, as we talked it through. We're happy that we set that sunny, uh, that money aside for a Safe Roots to School project, you know, when we determined one that, um, we should prioritize. So folks were, were happy about that. And then we talked a bit about a citywide bike, um, roll, and walk event, which, um, I understand that, um, Local Motion is gonna partner with actually Bike Ped Committee and, and Adam, Matt, our rec department, um, to, um, try and, um, to try and kick off. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Andrew. Elizabeth?
Thank you. I did attend a conversation with counselor on the twenty second at Orchard and had about five folks there. I know we're gonna have that as a topic later on our agenda, but, um, I did not have any company from my colleagues at that session, but had a good conversation with a number of folks on projects that are being worked on and some concerns and, and also around the budget, because some folks were coming to be informed about the budget and were very supportive. And then I had a chance to, uh, SB three C welcomed in a very soft way the new Bliss B, which is in city center, and they are open for business. And I would encourage any of our community members who have a chance to explore their offering, their menu offering, to support the business in city center, and I think, hope it's, hopefully it's the first of many. And then lastly, I want to thank all the voters who turned out on Tuesday. It was a little disappointing turnout, a little under twenty-one percent of our voters turned out. But I want to thank Lydia Diamond for joining me in a very civil campaign for the two-year seat and recognize that twenty-seven percent of the voters who did show up at the polls seemed to want some different representation. And I think it's really incumbent on our council to, as we look at how we reach out to various community members, how we staff committees when openings come up, and then how we seek out opinions within our growing community that we do acknowledge and, and invite people to feel comfortable sharing their concerns and issues through any number of venues. But I appreciated Lydia running and, um, I'm happy to be serving again as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Mike?
Congratulations to both you and Elizabeth, it was great to hear for, to see you swear in. I, I can testify that they did take the oath and they're fully, fully, we've even photographed it, so they are duly appointed members of the city council. Congratulations for all of us who also got put on additional positions and, uh, look forward to continued collaborative effort to try to, uh, this year make, uh, good progress on the city plan, uh, which is our sort of guiding tool. Uh, I also commend and thank, uh, the citizens of our, our, our great city for supporting both the budgets, allows us to get to work both on the school district and in the city on things that will advance the interests and nurture our, our, our children. And I also hope that we all took away from the, uh, the challenge it was to make this budget able to, to not put too much of a challenge on property taxes and to continue our services, to keep in mind that we should probably start focusing probably sooner than later on the whole issue of how to have a, a sort of growth or revenue generation that will ensure that we can continue on a path that does not overburden our citizens. So I look forward to our collaborative efforts and working in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Lori?
Start by congratulating you and Elizabeth on a highly competitive election. And I'm, uh, was impressed with the number of votes that Lydia got in this election. And I think it does, uh, speak to a desire in our community for, for broader representation. Also want to thank you, Tim, and you, Andrew, and you, Mike, for stepping up in the positions again for another year. I'm really glad I'm not secretary, so, or the chairman, so thank you, guys. I had a meeting today with Bettina, our, uh, climate action manager, and really enjoyed meeting, sitting down with her, and I think it's, she's gonna be a fabulous addition to our, uh, team and look forward to working with her more. Election day was a, was a long day. It was, it was slow, but to get to the end and have both budgets passed was a huge relief for us as a city. I think that the margin that the school budget passed, the very narrow margin, indicates the level of concern that we all have with our school funding and the way our schools are being managed. And I don't look at it as a victory, I look at it as a mandate to our school board to really take seriously the issues that are on the table and work diligently to address them over the coming year before we get to the next budget. I had a meeting with Elizabeth and a citizen called Thomas Moore, who, um, has spent his whole career working on parks and nationally and internationally. And he wanted to talk to us about city parks and about the, the master plans that are happening. And he had some very interesting per, perspectives on the history of parks and how we use our parks. And he is putting together a document which he will share with us and we will share with the open space master planning process. It was, it was really interesting and it opened, um, gave me a new perspective on parks and how they're used and the combination of civic use and open space and recreation space and how they can all interplay in ways that they don't often in our parks today. I, make sure I remember saying, I attended the, uh, open space advisory meeting. I'm on the advisory board for the, uh, Parks and Open Space Master Plan. And it's started really well, it's picking up steam, preparing for, uh, public engagement. I did look on our website and did not see, um, on the projects page yet, the open space and parks, uh, master planning process or the, uh, active transportation, I'm not sure, maybe I wasn't looking in the right place. But there's, uh, great documentation for both of those, which I was hoping people could find on the website, I didn't. But I did find, um, the economic development plan, which is under, underway on that site. And it participated on the twentieth of February with the introduction to the development of that plan. Civic Soul gave a great presentation. I think they're off to a great start also, and these plans are gonna really, um, help us as we're looking forward on our planning for the city. And lastly, I don't remember who gave me this suggestion, and I don't know if it's something we will do anything with, but we've talked about how to engage better between the council and schools and the school, uh, board. And someone had asked me, said they were looking at our committees and did not see anything that related to the schools and was wondering if we could have a school committee that could be a liaison to the, uh, to the school board and also provide us with background information as needed. I don't know what the protocol is for that, if it's appropriate, but it was an interesting concept to me and I thought I'd bring it forward. So that's my long-winded, long-winded presentation today, and thank you.
Thank you, Lori. And I want to thank Lori for his first time being a precinct captain during the election, taking over, uh, at Tuttle and District, which one? District eleven and working basically from like, what, six AM until nine PM?
Fourteen and a half hours.
Fourteen and a half hours, so that's a major accomplishment for your first time and that's really a great job, thank you. We, we, and so I'm sure that, that Holly missed having, uh, other counselors, you know, working in the other districts too.
I would like to also give a shout out to Holly, who did a phenomenal job getting us ready for the election and giving us, and especially me, the support we needed throughout the whole day and evening.
You mean the food?
The food was great too, yes. And there were no hot cheetos.
No flaming hot cheetos, that's really a shame, well, because I wasn't there, you know. I'd also like to congratulate, uh, Elizabeth for her victory in the election. And, uh, you know, personally, I had a long, hard-fought, expensive campaign, uh, but I was able to, uh, come out on top. More levity there if you didn't understand that, okay.
And you spent way too many hours out in the snow with your signs, I was amazed.
I, I did stand outside, I took the day off from work and I stood outside from, uh, seven thirty with Elizabeth until about four thirty when the rain and the snow got a bit a little bit too heavy. And I figured at that point it wasn't really gonna matter too much. But I think it's important to go out and, and see voters and to have them see you at, at all the polls. So I went to all the locations and stood out there. And, um, I also want to congratulate the school board because they now have filled their full seven slots, right? And, and I think, uh, a, a little bit of a congratulations goes out to Emily Hoffman for conducting a writing campaign for which, you know, there was no candidate. And sometimes that can be very difficult. Uh, and I, and I don't know how many variations you saw in your district on the spelling of those names, but it is, I, you know, it, it worked out, it worked out, it was great. I also, um, attended a meeting at the Lund headquarters yesterday with Ken Schatz and Sharon Lipshutz. And we talked about the three main, uh, bodies of, of work that the Lund home does. And, uh, it, it's changed since I first became associated with the building they have on Lund Road when I was, uh, trying to be qualified to teach in the Peace Corps and did some tutoring there for Yom Nefertiti. That program has changed and, and, and since then, they've accumulated, you know, two more major programs. So really excited about, um, the things that they do for, you know, for Chindon County, it's really great. And I just, uh, wanted to remind everybody, if you didn't know, all right, Pine Street has been cut at Queen City Park Road. You can no longer go down Pine Street and connect to Queen City Park Road, and that is permanent. I've been putting that on some Facebook pages, make people understand. I'm sure that there must be a signs at Home Ave and Pine Street, right? But I don't want anybody surprised, uh, because that's the work that's part of the Champlain Parkway. And, uh, that means that the parkway will connect with the interstate underneath, uh, the bridge at Shelburne Road. So I just want to make sure everybody understood that. And that's, uh, all I have, but just thank you all the voters that turned out. I know it was like Elizabeth said, a little bit less than twenty-one percent. I, we have to probably do some work to figure out how to get people in town in need to come out in excess of that. And, uh, and I'm really happy that the city budget passed with a margin that it did. I think that reflects well on, on the city manager and the staff and the work they did to put in a good budget at three point six seven percent rate increase, including the pennies. Like you said, the school budget, uh, was a much closer margin, but at least it passed on the first test, right? So anyway, so that's, that's all I have. Jesse?
Thanks, Colin. Before I start, I'm gonna ask Colin to come down. Several of you have asked a question about conflicts of interest, so Colin is going to address that now and then I will do my update.
Good evening, everyone. Colin McNeil, City Attorney. Um, as Jesse just said, yes, we have been receiving some, uh, an inquiry as to, uh, relating to the new municipal code of ethics and conflicts of interest. The question that was posed to us is whether, uh, can campaign contributions in and of themselves, uh, absent extraordinary circumstances, um, result in a conflict of interest that needs to be disclosed. We've, uh, spent a lot of time looking at the new municipal code of ethics and we reached out to the Vermont State Ethics Commission and I had a conversation with the executive director about this very issue. The Vermont Ethics Commission has advised that campaign contributions, absent extraordinary circumstances, in, insofar as, uh, some instance of, of a direct quid pro quo or some evidence of malfeasance of some regard, campaign contributions in and of themselves are, are not a, a conflict of interest and do not need to be disclosed. So we're going to be operating on that, uh, basis from now on, taking their recommendations. So if you have received a camp, campaign contribution, uh, and there's some matter that comes up that somehow relates to someone who has given the campaign, campaign contribution, you do not need to disclose that, 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 that does not create a conflict of interest.
Thank you, Colin.
Thank you.
Um, in terms of my report, I have a couple of things to share. One, also want to sincerely thank the community for the support of the city budget. It was approved with sixty-three point, or sixty-four point three percent of the vote, which means one thousand twenty-five neighbors voted, more voted in favor of the budget than against, and we're very thankful for that. Additionally, it was approved in all the districts, so the lowest approval rate was fifty-four point five percent and the highest was sixty-nine point seven percent. So really thankful for the support of the community. We, and for all of you and the hard work you did to set a good, appropriate goal for us and then review many, many, many documents, so thank you for that. On behalf of the leadership team and the staff, we really love our jobs and love serving the community in the ways we do and, um, thank you for the continued ability to do that next year. Few other things, uh, that, for the council and may, hopefully for the community, I have piloted tonight, uh, using cover sheets, agenda cover sheets on your agenda items that I am sharing with you. Um, and during my evaluation, one of the things I heard from you is the interest in having staff provide very clear, um, direction on recommendations. So this is a way that we can do that in a, in a uniform way that you can easily access the information and have a snapshot of what is before you. I welcome your feedback on that, I have talked to the leadership team about it. If it's something you like, we will start doing that, um, in place of short memos. We still may need memos when things are really heavy and meaty, um, but in place of short memos. So welcome your feedback on that. Several of you mentioned this, but we had a wonderful few days at the end of February with Civic Soul, our Economic Development Strategic Plan consultants. We had seventy-five individuals participate in focus groups and discussions over the course of those two days. It was really robust conversation. They will be back in May presenting, um, initial findings to the community. So we look forward to inviting them back and hearing your reactions. I shared this with the council, but wanted to share with the community, um, kind of some, um, some disappointing news that the Attorney General's Office has made the decision under Act one eighty to, uh, fund what's called pre-charge community justice services in our four communities in Chindon County that have CJCs in FY twenty-six, but starting in FY twenty-seven, move that funding solely to Burlington. We've, Burlington has already reached out to us to talk about what that may look like in twenty twenty-seven, which is great. But it does mean that we will likely be discontinuing our local CJC, South Burlington Employed CJC Services here in the city, starting in FY twenty-seven.
I was talking with one of our House representatives who thought that that, um, the, uh, the administration was gonna be centralized, but the, uh, staff would still be embedded with the local police. Is that not the case?
So that is what our, the commu, the three communities who are not Burlington have asked Burlington to do.
Yeah.
To have Burlington Employed Community Justice Professionals embedded in our police departments the way, very similar to how we have Howard employees embedded in our police departments. That is to be determined, they, as they propose a service model to us. Currently, they are not embedded in their police department, so it would be a new service model for them. But certainly that is one of the things we will be advocating for over the next eighteen months. Um, and I, I don't get any indication from Burlington at this point that that, they're not open to that, but we, there are many details to work out in that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Some fun little inside staff tidbit, we are, next week we are conducting two, um, AI workshops with staff for our IT teams to train us on best practice usage around AI and to start piloting some AI projects in the city. So you may see the fruits of those pilots in the next couple of months. Next week, we are also meeting with our city center, uh, neighbors and stakeholders around, um, our planning for a, a parking management system in city center. So trying to engage them early in that process, um, so they, uh, so we can have strategic conversations about what that might look like across, uh, public and private land, um, and how we enforce parking over time. And then finally, um, you probably have seen this in newsletters and whatnot, but the, so reminders that council and the community that the library is closed next Wednesday, March twelfth, for their annual staff retreat. And that's what I have, thanks.
Thank you, Jesse, and just one quick comment for the AI part. Just want to emphasize the fact that any AI tools that the city wants to use should be only the ones approved by your IT department. An awful story in the journal about a Disney employee who downloaded his own AI tool and it ended up ending his career and infecting a major part of the IT infrastructure for his employer and causing complete chaos, so, um, thank you. So now we'll move on to item seven, which is the consent agenda. We have a few items here, uh, we have consider and sign the disbursements and then approve the award of the Market Street and Heinsberg Road Traffic Signal Project to Engineers Construction Incorporated and authorize the Deputy Director of Capital Projects to sign all paperwork and manage the contract going forward. We have approve the award of the nineteen Gregory Drive New Boiler Project to Alliance and TCV and authorize the Deputy Director of Capital Projects to sign all paperwork and manage the contract going forward. We also have adopt the South Burlington Active Transportation Plan as presented and dated February twenty twenty-five. And those are the items for the consent agenda, can I have a motion to approve, please?
I'd like to see, I'd like to have a little discussion on, um, seven B and on seven D.
Seven B and D?
Yes.
Do you want to do that now?
I'd be happy to do it now if that's appropriate or pull it for discussion, whichever is appropriate.
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay. Seven B, I just want to, um, say that, um, I did receive it, an email from Kevin Doyle last minute. What's that, I mean Ryan, excuse me, Ryan, I know a Kevin Doyle. And, uh, discussing around, or roundabout at that location. And while I think that moving ahead with a, with a traffic signal right now is, is the right choice, I have seen repeatedly the value of traffic, um, roundabouts. And given the way that area is developed right now, the west side is still going to be redeveloped, and I think that we should seriously consider looking at a roundabout in that location as that area gets redeveloped. It can make a big difference on traffic flow, um, as we've really seen on the Champlain Parkway at Flynn Avenue with City Market. Not having a roundabout there makes terrible traffic congestion. So I think that is worthy of consideration going forward. And on the active transportation plan, um, reviewing it once again, I have some, some small, small details and maybe they just don't get addressed, but on the map that shows the built-out, uh, future, um, paths, they have a path going somewhere where it is not physically possible to go, which to me doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And the, a couple of the maps don't show the trail system building out towards. a couple of the maps don't show the trail system building out towards Lime Kiln Road. And I think that with the finalization, it would be great for those things to really reflect what we're trying to do and to have consistency in the, in the maps. I don't know how that gets dealt with at this late hour. Maybe it doesn't, but I just wanted to bring those to attention.
Yes, Mike?
Just to, just to add, what Lori said, I think I'll take it one step further. I'd say as a general policy, as we go forward, I think we should, as areas develop or change, always look at the possibility of roundabouts. Most places I've lived, that has been a very common factor. And as we've had discussions here with Paul, it's been recognized that roundabouts are the best way to move traffic as well as so much safer. People running the light is the most dangerous traffic accident you can get into. And it also has, as mentioned, the benefit of less idle and less carbon. So I think as a concept, I would strongly support as we go forward. To me, it's into our whole city plan, concepts, concepts that we're pushing for. And I would like to think that we would always try to look at that as an option as we go forward in areas. As far as the Active Transportation Plan, you know, we've talked about this before. I, I think it'd be good if we could just even get some basic numbers that say our, our total network objective is X miles. And we're at this point and we're looking to move forward on that because what I find when we read it, it's in great detail, but it's, there isn't sort of a macro picture of what we're trying to go towards. And I think that would be a useful tool, both on our webpage and just for us to sort of track how we prioritize this and how we go forward on it.
Thanks, Mike. I also am a roundabout fan, but I'm not a traffic engineer, so I don't know what criteria are applied at different types of intersections. But when there were workshops for the Williston kind of pre-streetscape design, but they were doing intersection redesign, one of the designs was a roundabout at Midas Drive and a roundabout also at at Heinsberg Road. And I raised my hand way up high and said, that's a great idea, but I knew it wasn't going to fly. And I, I think there is, there's some legitimate talk about a roundabout at Swift and Spear. Right? And so that's a real possibility, right? And you know, what, what happened at the top of Shelburne Street, right, is, is I think that's a successful project. It took them almost two years to do, right? But it works. I don't have a problem with it. It works very well. And, and the other ones, if they're engineered correctly, right, you know, that's, so I understand.
A little, a little shout out to Tony Reddington, who tried, he was a traffic engineer and was trying to get the Champlain Parkway redesigned so there would be a roundabout at Pine Street and at the end of Pine Street and at other places. It was said that Tony Reddington never saw an intersection that didn't need a roundabout. And they can be very tough to fit into compact areas where the buildings have already happened. But their upfront cost is higher, but their efficacy is fantastic. And just outside of Albany, New York, there's a community that you drive through, every intersection is a roundabout. And it's, you go, why isn't this everywhere? So.
So with those two comments you made about those two things, are you still willing to, okay. So did you make the motion yet to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
The consent agenda?
The consent agenda, yes.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about the consent agenda? All those in paper say aye?
Aye.
And it is unanimous. Thank you very much. Now we're moving on to item number eight, which is adopt the, oh, yeah, adopt the twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six City Council Rules of Procedure. Jesse Baker, City Manager.
Thank you. So here start our official organization, other than electing your officers or annual actions. So the rules of procedure that are proposed before you are meet our Vermont Open Meeting Laws and City Charter requirements. They are based on a model policy offered by the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. And they are identical to your rules of procedure last year with two exceptions. One, and I have outlined this in the cover sheet, we have moved the date of requested items to Tuesday from Wednesday to meet our new Thursday publication goal. So we're, we're doing our best to publish our agendas on Thursday, which means we need to know by Tuesday if counselors or community members would like to add an agenda item. And then the second change, you discussed this last year, so we integrated it here was to move, we are required to have three, three physical places where we post your agendas. So historically, that has been City Hall and Library, the School District and Healthy Living. We have changed the third posting area from Healthy Living to the University Mall because it is more a public access location that you can go to without necessarily being pressured to spend money.
We, we are posting agendas now on Front Porch Forum, correct?
Yes, these are the physical posting locations.
So this only addresses physical posting? Are we, are we adding the fact that agendas are being posted virtually and other, through other venues?
So that is also required. There's also requirements about posting on the website. I don't believe this policy, we could search it, specifically calls out where else we post. We do that in lots of places at this point.
So we, we don't have to call that out in this?
No.
That was my question. Thank you.
Especially for the ones that go above and beyond. I just want to give a shout out to Going to Tuesday for getting agenda items because getting the packets on Thursday will be a big help in having time to effectively review and digest the packets before we get to a meeting. So thank you.
So do you need a motion to adopt this?
You need to adopt this, yep.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in paper say aye?
Aye.
And it is unanimous. All right. Item number nine, which is appoint the charter and ordinance required positions for a period of one year as outlined in the attached memorandum.
So in the city charter and in your adopted ordinances, there are a number of positions that require you to appoint annually. Those are presented here. There is one change I would ask you to make. Counselor Fitzgerald very intelligently caught this. So for many years, Dan Boyer has served as our second constable in the city. Now that he is an elected school board member per your charter, he is prohibited from serving in this appointed role. So I would respectfully request you remove him from this list of appointments. We have an idea of a second constable we can bring you, but are awaiting confirmation that that person is willing to serve. So we will bring that back to you at a future date. Other than that, this reflects the same constellation of appointments you have previously made, including the mid-year appointments you made this year of health officer and deputy health officer.
Does there need to be a motion to remove Dan?
There needs to be a motion to approve these as presented with the exception of Dan.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in paper say aye?
Aye.
And it is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Colin was very worried about continuing on as the city attorney. Thank you, Colin.
Let's, let's wish Dan good luck in his new position on the school board. Now we're at item ten, which is discuss and possibly approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six City Council meeting schedule pursuant to the City Charter, Chapter eleven, Section three oh five A. Again, City Manager Jesse Baker.
Yep. So you have the schedule in front of you. It follows the requirements of two first and third or twice a month meetings. We've included the dates and some key points about what will, when, when those dates are a little off. What it does not include is the date yet in likely early July where we will need to set the tax rate, but until we understand when the grand list will be lodged and the tax bills to go out, we are hesitant to schedule that at this point. So this, you can always schedule special meetings, but this would be the adopted list of regular meetings throughout the year.
Quick question on that. My memory may not be right, but I thought there was a month last year when we only had one meeting. And are we, we have to have two meetings every month.
So I would love you to have a month where you only had one meeting. We have not done that while I've been here.
So maybe it was three meetings and I just didn't, okay.
I think you
There you go.
You can approve it, but it has been past practice of this council to meet twice a month. If you would like to go down to a month in the summer without a meeting, that is, or without two meetings, that is fine with staff.
No, I, I just didn't, I was asking if this is a statutory requirement to do two every month.
Talk amongst yourselves and I will
Well, we can, we can
We don't need to worry about that.
We could start at four PM and go to midnight once a month, probably.
Oh, that's a great idea.
Yeah, okay. Or start at six thirty and end at three in the morning. I mean.
I'd like to move to approve this schedule.
I have one question. We, we talked amongst ourselves at the number, the, the, the value of having these retreats. And that we were almost thinking of having it quarterly. I think there was pretty much, we all found them extremely useful. Is this something that we, has to be included in this motion? Is there something that we schedule separately? Because it's not a quote unquote, a formal city council meeting in the sense.
So that's, I would say really your choice. You, you can always schedule additional meetings. Those would be considered. You could schedule those as special meetings otherwise.
Well, okay, that's fine. And I hope we, one thing I just told my colleagues here, I hope we, we focus in on that. I think we all value those discussions. And I hope we can do it quarterly. So perhaps we can at some point talk about creating a schedule that we can sort of walk in for the year.
This is the minimum number of meetings here, okay? Just the bare minimum.
You can add three a month, Mike, that you can go to.
And, and, and the vote stands? Okay, we're set.
Can I go back to Lori's question? So Section three oh five of your charter does say that your meetings shall be held at least twice a month. I think the if the council wanted to give yourselves a little bit of a break, we could like think about identifying a summer meeting where we just have a much lighter agenda. So you meet really for the purpose of doing a consent agenda and other things, but not have big meaty policy conversations.
I was just concerned about extenuating circumstances and knowing that we have to do it. Okay.
Elizabeth?
If, if we, I know I will be out of the country the second April meeting, so I'll just throw that out there so we avoid not being able to have a quorum if anyone else has a conflict.
The second April meeting. Yeah. And I'm going first.
I will be also definitely out May nineteenth.
And I'm out the sixth.
And though we set this as the schedule, we can actually change dates if we need to. Is that correct? Yeah. So this is just setting the schedule. I move that we approve the schedule as presented.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in paper say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And it is unanimous. Thank you. Item eleven, which is designate the other paper as our official paper of record.
Again, you are required to do this per public records and open meeting law. We have, the other paper has been our designated paper for many years. Recommend you approve that. I didn't think that was worth the cover sheet.
We have a motion? We have a second?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I know when I was working the polls, I had many people who were talking about not receiving the paper in a timely manner, like by up to two weeks. So, you know, no, no dissing the other paper as the, as the official paper of record. But I do think we should acknowledge there are some delivery issues that will impact some residents not receiving information potentially in a timely manner, if that is the way we disseminate information.
And we don't know if that's other paper related or USPS related.
I suspect it's USPS related, but
And it might get worse.
Yes, it might.
Yeah, the reality is if that's our method of communicating important information, we are getting feedback that many residents do not get that in a timely manner.
So I would certainly encourage you to encourage people to sign up for City News. It's almost duplicative, what we put in City News versus the other paper. It is also a requirement that we notice all, all statutorily required things on the website as well. So we will always do that as well as in, in the other paper.
It just has an idea. Is it possible to send that to all registered voters? I mean, do people have to sign up for it or, or could you just send it out to all registered voters whose addresses we have? Or you need, it's the email issue? I mean, because we're always talking about how do we maximize communication interest, including it goes back to the conversation about the turnout of the election. So I mean, you know, just again, this idea of how do we increase that? I don't know if that's one option.
My sense is that the city is growing its communication channels more so than it ever has before, right? And especially with the new website and other social media streams, right? And that they'll take advantage of that as they, as they can. You know, we have an address for every taxpayer, for every household, right? But we don't have an email for every one of those. And the only time somebody receives a mailing, when, when all taxpayers receive a mailing is when they get their tax bill, right? So I mean, there are opportunities to put a little card in there to advertise something, but, but that's once a year.
Yeah, but maybe that's, I would welcome every opportunity as you suggest.
That may be an opportunity to say, these are the ways in which you can obtain information from the city, you know, and sign up for stuff, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Good idea.
And, and I just wanted to compliment Liberty Dar at the other paper. I've appreciated her objective writing and interpretation of events at city council meetings and getting the details right. And I appreciate that. And I think that, you know, fair reporting is, is something that's, it can be hard to find and I appreciate it. So did we have a motion?
We have a motion.
We didn't have a second.
I will second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in paper say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And it is unanimous. All right. And now we come to the money. We're going to ask to designate the TD Bank as our official depository.
So again, we've used TD Bank for a number of years, predates me. We have a very good relationship with our bankers. We are earning excellent interest rates. Recommend that we maintain that relationship.
So moved.
I'll second that.
And we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in paper say aye?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you TD Bank for your interest rates, your deposit rates. Appreciate it. And now item thirteen, which is approved resolution number twenty twenty-five dash six, designating short-term parking areas on public roads and highways in the city and specifically making two parking spaces on Market Street, fifteen-minute spaces and featuring Erica Quallon, Deputy Director for Capital Projects. There she is. Good evening.
Hello, everyone. Sorry to not be there in person. I'm coming to you live from New York for a long weekend. But yeah, Erica Quallon, Deputy Director of Capital Projects. This is coming out of a request from Snyder Braverman, the primary developer at this point on Market Street, as Blissby was preparing to open, now open, but to designate some short-term parking spaces, which are very much a business-friendly means of parking management to encourage turnover in the area. And acknowledging, as Jesse had mentioned earlier, that parking management is in flux. So acknowledging that this is kind of a short-term measure to have this until we have a larger parking management plan. But as our first ground floor retail space in this rapidly changing city center, we recommend this resolution, which designates two parking spaces that are just before the bump out on Market Street. It is just west of Garden Street, which is pretty much right in front of Blissby, having two fifteen-minute spaces there. And this was also, this recommendation also comes from a traffic engineer at the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission. So we had someone else just take a look to see if this is the right approach for now until we have a larger-scale parking management plan.
So this would just be signage only at this time, right?
Correct. Technically, it is, since it's a resolution, it would be enforceable. We don't have necessarily enforcement operating procedures, but it is um, operating procedures, but it is enforceable. Um, and yes, it would just be, uh, designating them would be through this resolution. And DPW would put uh, two signs out there.
Okay, great. Can I have a motion to approve this?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion about it? Andrew?
Yeah, so I've just, um, is fifteen minutes, I mean, I, I recognize we're probably not going to enforce it, that carefully perhaps, but is fifteen minutes enough to run in and order and get your stuff and, and, and come out if that's the thought? Or like, was that the recommendation? I, I guess I would have thought thirty minutes feels like a you know, a more reasonable amount of time to let someone um, into a place and, and do what they have to do.
Uh, yeah, if that is your wish for us to look at thirty minutes instead, the um, uh, Jason from the CCRPC looked around at other municipalities and short-term parking is pretty typical to be fifteen minutes. Understanding that um, at this point, it has to be a bit kind of uh, community enforcement goodwill of people. Um, so this is
The intended use of this is presumably to go into Blissby, figure out what you want to get, stand online, order, wait for them to make it. You know, honestly, for that purpose, fifteen minutes sounds really tight.
So it's actually not for that purpose. The, it, fifteen minutes was the specific request from Snyder Braverman and Blissby. It's really meant as a takeout pickup spot. So you've called ahead, you've ordered, it's the fast casual model. It's Uber, it's DoorDash. Uber does do DoorDash. It's really meant to be that quick of a turnover, not for somebody to go in and say, chit chat him and say hi to people and order and take out.
So it's more like a commercial space?
Yeah.
I see, okay, okay.
The key is to order ahead.
Like Winuski's courtesy spaces when you're grabbing your coffee or you're picking up your takeout.
Okay, that, that's, that sounds good.
Great, so uh, we had a motion and a second, and are you ready for the vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Have fun, Erica.
Have fun in, are you in the, I, behind you, it's green and white like you're in a forest, sort of, but not.
No, it's a mural behind me in uh, my hotel. I'm here for a birthday weekend getaway.
Well, have fun.
Thank you.
So item fourteen, appoint three members to the natural res-
No, you have two.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're jumping down. Sorry, I've got an arrow on that, right? We're jumping down to an item uh, for the agenda for the March seventeenth meeting.
Sure, I can do that one first. I'm really, I, I apologize. I don't know why I have such a block of putting this on the agenda. I will get better at it. So March seventeenth meeting right now is, is interesting in that it's actually relatively short. Uh, so on your agenda for the seventeenth currently is the approval of a lease extension and memorandum of understanding between the city and the uh, Cairns, the DPSA, which is the organization that oversees and operates the Cairns Arena. Um, we have the approval of the extension of the auditing contract with R H R Smith. Uh, they are current auditors and we'd like to extend them until, to bridge over until our new finance system is implemented. We have the approval of a application for a, a class-two paving grant and the award of the actual uh, twenty twenty-five paving contract. Um, we have your discussion of the process by which we will award the FY twenty-five social service funding. Um, and we have a report out on the climate, our Climate Action Plan Progress Report that Bettina and Lou are working on. That is your current agenda.
And it's on Saint Patrick's Day, isn't it?
Ooh, excellent day to have a short agenda.
That's right. Uh, keyword being short.
Will we have green beer here?
I think we'll all be wearing green that night. Okay, thank you, Jesse. And then we had a second item, which is uh, about the police recruitment process.
Yes, um, so thank you very much for taking this up. Um, this is not traditionally something that I would ask you to add as a late agenda item. Um, having said that, I am spending an amazing amount of time at the police department. Currently, I've gone to all of the roll calls this week to talk to staff. And there's a lot of momentum about moving this process forward, so I want to demonstrate to the team that uh, this is a really important hire for us and we are taking it very seriously. Um, so your action tonight really is to receive a briefing on my plan and to appoint a city counselor to serve on what I'm calling the Police Chief Advisory Team. Um, as you um, likely know, under the charter, I have the exclusive authority to appoint a police chief. And appointing a police chief is a really um, important decision for our community. So I'm try, I've tried to lay out a process that solicits as much kind of community feedback into my decision-making as possible. Um, so to just walk you through that quickly, um, the ideas to uh, the plan is to create um, this police chief advisory team and needs a better acronym. Uh, with represent, a representative from a number of sectors throughout the community. So a representative from the school community, the faith community, the Vermont Professionals of Color Network. Um, the business associate, the business community, likely through the SBBA. Um, a police department staff person, likely appointed by the union, um, a city counselor. And then Colonel Matthew Birmingham of the Vermont State Police has agreed to serve on it as well as kind of a technical expert. Uh, he is also a South Burlington resident, which is fantastic. Um, so that advisory team will meet uh, likely three or four times through the process to uh, provide guidance to help convene the listening sessions, to serve as the welcomer of the listening sessions. Um, the listening session will be, listening sessions will be conducted with the general public, hopefully hosted by a council. We could do that at a regular council meeting if folks were interested, or it could be a separate meeting uh, with service providers, the BIPOC community, the business community, and then with staff. Also pause here to say that I am in the process of working with a, a consulting firm called JW Leadership Consulting uh, to support this process. So um, that consulting firm is led by a gentleman named Jim Baker. Um, he is no relation to me. I've actually never met him in person, only on Zoom. He's a retired state trooper, was the chief in Rutland for a number of years, was the department, was the commissioner of the Department of Corrections during COVID. Um, has a lot of public safety service in Vermont and helps communities with these recruitment processes. So his firm, he or his firm would be the ones um, facilitating the listening sessions to add, as an independent voice to talk with the community about what they want to see in the next chief. Um, we will then do a full national recruitment process. Andy's already working on our recruitment brochure. Um, we'll, we'll send that out not only to our, all of our Vermont and New England networks, but to the International Association of Police Chiefs as well. Um, and then JW Leadership will lead us through um, a resume review process, a screening process, and then a full assessment center. Assessment centers are very common for public safety hiring processes. It's basically a hyper interview um, process where you are led through scenario-based questions, media questions, interviews with lots of stakeholder groups, the, the advisory team will do an interview. And then of course, and the staff will do an interview as well. Um, so my hope is that, that, that assessment center takes place over the summer with an offer of employment to be made by uh, the end of the summer, depending on um, the life circumstance of our final candidate. Um, hope to have them sworn in by the end of the calendar year. I also do hope that we have internal candidates. We have done a fair amount of work in succession planning in that department. But I also firmly believe that, that, that our next chief should be held up against what the market could bear. And we have the best of the best on the staff now, and we really want to ensure that we get the best of the best in the next round as well. So that's the plan, and I would love for you all to uh, appoint a member of the advisory team. I met one of you to be on the advisory team.
Is there anybody who has a?
I would be interested.
Okay, so Andrew, did you express an interest?
Yeah.
Okay, and Elizabeth is expressing an interest as well. Do you two want to battle it out? Remote art wrestle, yeah.
If, uh, if Elizabeth really want to do it, that's, that's, I mean, I'd, I'd like to do it, but that, you know, whatever.
I'd be happy to do it.
So Andrew, you're okay with Elizabeth doing it?
I'm fine.
Okay, so do you need a motion for that?
It, it would be helpful, I think.
Okay.
I move that we appoint Elizabeth to the advisory uh, committee for hiring a new police chief.
I second that motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and it's unanimous. Thank you very much for volunteering, Elizabeth. And also, Andrew, thank you for volunteering.
I do want to just say that um, for a position as important as this is to our community. I greatly appreciate the effort and focus that you're putting on it. And um, you, uh, Chief Burke has been just an exceptional asset to our community. And um, if we end up half as lucky as we've been with Chief Burke, we will be doing really well. So I appreciate um, and just really re- recognize the importance of this decision for our whole community.
Could I add one thing? Thank you, Lori, for those words. Um, I do want to say, again, I started this by saying this is an unusual thing for me to ask as a late agenda item, and what we have missed now is an opportunity to get this out in the community. So we will be doing a full story in City News also about this, and I'm happy to review the process again at a future council meeting in order, in order to make sure that folks know what to expect in the months to come.
It might be a good article to get into the, for the paper as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, moving on to item fourteen, which is appoint three members to the Natural Resource and Conservation Committee. Now, I, did we have a sheet that?
So you do have a cover sheet to this.
We, we did.
Yep.
Where, was it at the bottom, or is?
If you do it off the website, you can just click on it.
Well, you know.
Given new information that we have from uh, the NRCC, um, I've got it here. I was gonna say, um, I would encourage us to have a brief executive session to discuss this item.
Is it, you good with that, Elizabeth? Okay, alright, so do we have a motion for that?
I got it right here.
Okay.
I move the city uh, council enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing the appointments of public officer or employee, specifically appointment to the Natural Resources and Conservation Committee. Inviting Jesse Baker into the session uh, with council for discussion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Point three members to the uh, Natural Resources and Conservation Committee. Lori, would you like to read a motion for the appointment?
Yeah, given our discussions, I move that we appoint Jessica Wilkie, uh, Grace Leckie. I hope I pronounced that right, and Jean Hunt to the Natural Resources Conservation Committee.
Friendly amendment to your motion?
Yep.
And find that they are the best suited candidates for the position.
And we find that they are the best suited candidates for the position.
Agreed.
They second that motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and it is unanimous, thank you. Now we're at item fifteen, which is uh, discuss the conversation with the counselor program and determine the next steps. It's a really good conversation to have about the conversation with the counselor. Um, I'll just say that, you know, I think I've done it three times now, and the turnout has been three to four people. One, one time there were like six, but it's like between three and six people. And the things that get discussed, in my experience, are pretty uh, items that are, that are before the council already. Um, or things that have happened, and they want more information. Um, I think it's, I think it's a useful exercise, but I'm not sure that we're getting the people that we would like to get. I think we get a lot of repeats of people that are pretty much interested in, in the council and attend council meetings anyway. And take advantage of that ability to come meet with us personally. Um, but I want to hear from the rest of the council.
I agree. It seems to be the, the regulars um, that have been coming with that a lot of new questions, so I think it's a very useful forum. But it would be um, we should think about how do we make it more useful, I guess. And, and I don't, I don't have great ideas about that, but, but um, um, it's not quite functioning, I think, as well as it could. That's my perspective.
I agree with both of those and um, I've been at a few that have had significantly better attendance. Um, I find that there is a core of regulars that come and the conversation, even with them, the conversation varies significantly. Um, and then there are occasional new people that come with interesting perspectives. For the amount of time it takes, I don't feel that it's reaching as many people as I would like it to. Um, but I also feel that perceptually, it's really important because it shows that the council is trying to reach out. If there were a way to structure it or come up with a different venue that can bring greater participation. I would really like to see that and um, a part of me could say I could see not doing it, except I think that, I think that for the community, the fact that we do it sends a very important message. So I'm not sure how we can send that message and also get better efficacy out of it.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would have to agree with all those observations. Um, despite that, I think, I have an interest in continuing, but I think the challenge is um, you know, our goal was to really have a, a opportunity for folks who have difficulty coming to an evening meeting. Um, and, and it is definitely a more informal dialogue. Um, I do look at it a little bit like, um, you know, even if it's a smaller group. I do think, like the group I was with in February, I think any one of those folks would have gone out and been an ambassador in support of the budget. So I think it creates both goodwill, but also some advocacy for, for things um, that can be shared with neighbors and so forth. So the, the dilemma that I've thought about is, you know, both, the venues we have both here more formally and that informal venue, people are still self-selecting into that. And I think we'll, we'll always have that, people self-select onto the district website and, and so forth. Um, some of the reach-out opportunities I've thought about that might be worth pursuing is we have a lot of HOAs in town, and they all have annual meetings. So I wondered if that might be a reach-out that we would offer to have, you know, be one or two of us to participate in those meetings. I think tenant meetings where for a rental population might be another opportunity. And then I also think um, uh, kind of neighborhood invitational meetings where there might be one neighbor who's willing to invite, you know, eight friends uh, type of thing. So I think there's some other venues we could pursue and make ourselves available, maybe to try those out. Um, but uh, yeah, I, I mean, I don't have a specific suggestion, except maybe, you know, go to once a month on the Saturday morning and then pursue some of these other avenues that we might get to some different people, um, even if it's a one-time basis, just to see can, can we create sort of demand for um, uh, you know, exposure to issues and things like that.
Hmm, that's it.
So, I, I agree, you know, I think we've all had the same experiences. I, I've been fortunate, I think, uh, the range for me has always been like six to twelve, but yes, there are, if you go to Chamberlain, the, the, the show up Chamberlain, the ones if you go to Orchard, the ones who show coverage. But that being said, as, 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 as a few of you mentioned, the ability to have a discussion even with people who come frequently in a back-and-forth way. I, I, you know, I, I learn a lot, uh, you know, on things that I agree with or things that I perhaps didn't agree with. And now I understand a different perspective, or at least realize that there are other perspectives and other interests. So I, I think that is useful to us in terms of carrying out this role. I agree with, you said it's useful to show that we're actively interested in seeking that. And so perhaps along what uh, Elizabeth was saying is, uh, you know, we have this page, you know, with council. If we do it for one, is, is it possible to have like a signup sheet? You know, if you're interested to have your uh, HOA speak to us, you know, send in an email to this address and, you know, and, and I don't know. Uh, you know, Andy basically calls, falls up and confirms that, you know, it is an HOA and, you know, it is gonna be. Calls falls up and confirms that, you know, it is an HOA and, you know, it is gonna be group body and then we basically. Like we do with the, the, the week, the counselor, you know, meet with counselor, you know, rotate to, to, to as based on schedule. But I think both optically is important and it lines up with what we'll be having this kit. On sort of equity kit that will, you know, will complement that. And I also think, at least for me personally, but I think it's for all of us. Way to continue to learn and understand our community better and, and therefore better able to make decisions.
And I just wanna add, Elizabeth, you're, I like your idea a lot and. One possibility would be Champlain Housing Trust. And the other that I thought of as you were talking was. We could reach out to Lydia and see if she would like to host a, a meeting. Because clearly. There's a desire for, for us. Giving access to different segments of our population and that might be one way to. To really hear what we're not hearing.
And I, and I think, you know, to me, the pathway to sort of encourage. Representation at the committee level, cause what, what do we have? A hundred and thirty community members who participate on city committees, which is an incredible. Group of volunteers is to have that dialogue, have relationships, create networking opportunities and. You know, give people access to something they maybe haven't thought about before for the next openings that may come up in the future.
And a lot of what we're doing or haven't done that I hope we can do with this is create invitations. So. The folks that show up all the time, when they see something, they're gonna show up, but how do we actually invite? Specific constituencies to, to be heard and get engaged.
Identify those special interest groups.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, much, much like is being done with the, with the plan process that we're doing where. The equity and inclusion toolkit is identifying which groups. We need to include and then have meetings for that purpose.
Just, this is a hundred percent your all's call how you do this, but just to throw out one other thing, we're trying on the staff side is really to. Maximize going to where people already are, so you have your branding now for conversation with the counselor. There's no reason you couldn't do a table at illuminate Vermont or a table at, you know, the rec department partners with CHT to do the summer barbecue series. Or a table at SB Night Out, that, that's another way, it's, it's different, it's not as intimate, it's not as maybe. A detailed level of conversation, but it's still, it may get more contact with folks who aren't. Otherwise gonna create time in their lives for these conversations.
You know, I just, the more we can find a way to have a council presence. Where our community is, is meeting. Will, will strengthen that connection.
You could test that theory with illuminate Vermont at the end of April, see how it goes and then. Oh, I'm sorry Elizabeth.
I'll be here, I'll give it a try.
But, but for example, like last.
That's right.
Last August, they had a barbecue wagon for the seniors up at, at Metter Memorial Park and my sister was here, so I took her. And we just sat down at tables and, and talked with people and, and it was, it was a good experience and food was good too and. A lot of french fries and a little french fries. One thing that's nice about the coffee the counselor is that, you know. It, it's, it's different than a city council meeting because these meetings are, are in the public, not of the public and, and, and those counselor meetings coffees are, are. Informal of the public.
That's right.
Which allows for much more one-on-one dialogue. You can get into some of the weeds you can't get into here. And, and they get to express more of their opinions and, and sometimes you can change their mind too, which is interesting.
But tie, tying in.
That's true.
Tying in with, with Adam and the programs that he's doing and tying in with the library. And the programs they're doing. We may be able to find on a monthly basis, one program. So we do our, our once a month. Conversation meeting as we've been doing it and then once a month attend one of these other. Events that are going on to try and hit different. Different interest groups.
And is there a way to reach out to HOAs and say if you're interested, I mean, cause. You know, maybe a lot will not be interested because they wanna keep focused and do it, but there will be some who will want to. Yeah, cause that's always a, a captive audience, so I think all these ways, you know, as you're saying, one is the standard and one is. This sort of experimenting in these new fields to see where we're good, but I, I'm all for it, all for it, great ideas.
So is the conclusion that we'd wanna continue with the, the, the formal coffee with the counselor, but then look for other opportunities? That are meetings that the city has organized or that we can.
But do the formal only once a month.
Once a month, twice, yeah, that's fine.
And I, I do feel having, rotating it around the schools is, has been positive. You know, a lot of the folks who come don't have a reason to be in the schools very often. So it can't hurt that that's a connection we're establishing as well and utilizing a facility.
And have we had feedback from the schools about having to have a janitor there on Saturday mornings that, are they okay with it and it's not a problem?
You pay for it.
No, we pay for it, but I, you know, if, if that's the normal day off for a janitor, I don't know and I, I feel. Every time they're there at like, just before I get there, I'm like, thanks for coming in, it's really great, I know you're getting paid for it, but you know.
If we did it at the senior center, would we be paying for it?
The one, the one caveat with the one I had at city center is the timing, cause the building did not open up. Till right when it was supposed to be starting. And it, it happened to be very cold that day, so it was a little bit awkward.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
With that timing.
We, we had the one in the digital lab and I, I thought that actually worked really well. The, the digital room in the, in the library.
Yeah, okay.
I really liked meeting in the library and.
Me too.
While I like meeting at the, at the schools, Elizabeth, your point that it's not. Rarely is it, uh. People with schoolchildren that are coming. City Center, this building, my perception is we're trying more and more to get people to think of this as the place to come. And it's pretty central and it's pretty accessible. So.
I, I would still just rotate it between here, Orchard and, and Chamberlain, just cause it, we're showing up in neighborhoods.
I think the library also. Is a nicer, honestly, I mean, sitting in the cafeteria is not as nice as sitting in. One of the rooms in the, in the library, it's just a, it feels like a more comfortable venue, honestly.
The, the tables are a little bit higher at the library.
So I, look, we could always make it nine fifteen, right?
So do you have enough direction from us on that?
Well. I mean, I think you need to pick some dates and assign people and we can put together a schedule.
Oh, okay, do you want that?
So.
As fast as you wanna do it.
Didn't Andy put together a schedule and then we put our names to it?
That's what we did for the last cycle.
Could we do that for this cycle also and have him pick a monthly Saturday? Uh, it could be either like the first or the, you know, the same. Same Saturday of the month for the conversation. And then something different for a different community then each month.
And is it possible to this, like on the same page, a sign up, if you have an HOA and you're interested, please contact. Andy and then someone reach out, you know, cause it may be a city event or maybe an actual group of people who have expressed an interest in.
And I'd encourage Andy to use the. Diversity and Equity Outreach Toolkit to get us connected with as many communities as he can.
And ma- maybe Andy could just kind of randomize our names for now, just kind of pick and if it doesn't work, we could, you know.
We will bring you back something for your next meeting, hopefully.
Waited, we do a good job delegating.
I gotta say, you did an excellent job delegating, going from a Thursday meeting to a. You know, we have three business days to turn around the next agenda, so.
You have been taking this as our highest esteem and, and confidence in your ability to work efficiently and effectively.
It's your esteem and Andy's ability, not my ability.
Just throwing one more ball at the juggler.
Alright, we're done with that agenda, yeah?
Thank you.
You're good?
I'm good.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to item sixteen, which is discuss the annual review of the city manager. By the city council and I think we have a motion to go to executive session for this.
So before you do that motion, sorry Lori, do you, are you intending to come out and do something? Or do you wanna go to other business and then go into executive session and take no action tonight?
I prefer the latter. Let's do other business and then go into executive and be done.
Oh, okay, then let's do other business now. Okay, does anybody besides me have some other business? Sure.
One kind of in line with what Mike suggested was to think about. A retreat at some point. Sooner versus later or some kind of schedule. I think you brought up a couple of topics there would be the school committee thing and I think. Many of us have heard conversations or talked about growth management and then affordability. And those to me would be good topics to consider discussing. And then the other area is do we wanna come up with a schedule of other paper articles from council?
Sure, right, yep, city councilor corner.
Yeah.
Good idea, cause we are now city councillors again, so we can write, yeah, yeah.
And I, I neglected mine, so I'm gonna have to pick it up again.
Yeah. You're not alone. My other business is the Dorset Street Kennedy Drive Intersection Signalization. And I've already sent an email and I, I copied you a couple of weeks ago. That the northbound signal going, if you're coming up the hill towards city center. North on Dorset Street, that signal will not change from green to red for at least thirty-five to forty seconds, even if there are no cars coming. So what that tends to do is just like leave everybody waiting and at rush hour. You get, you'll get people backed up on the right-hand side of Kennedy Drive headed towards the interstate that are three cycles deep. Right, and, and so every time you go through a cycle and you have to wait forty seconds for the northbound Dorset Street to, to, to change. I mean, the, either the sensor is not functioning because with, you know, it's like a year old now, right? Or more, or, or there's something wrong with the internal logic on the, on the box, right? Once the last, if there are five cars waiting to come through and they, they flush out. If there are no cars there, that signal should change within a couple of seconds as the other lanes do. I've watched them while I've sat there and that when they clear out, they're done. This is not the case with northbound, so there's something wrong there. And of course, we also know that Aspen Drive is on a timer, right, because they have, they have a physical problem that we've been told about. And, and I don't wanna, I'm not worried about that because maybe that acts as a nice gate because there is so much congestion that happens down at. Healthy Living, you know, Trader Joe's to Blue Mall to Barnes and Noble to Williston Road. That, you know, it, it, at, at those peak rush hour congestion times, it gets really backed up and gets pseudo gridlocked, right? So maybe having Aspen Drive at a, at a timer is not a bad idea because it gates traffic coming up north, so. Anyway, if, if something could be looked at on the northbound Dorset, that would be great. So that's our other business. Any other, other business? Andrew?
Do we do, do we do anything with regard to what Elizabeth brought up about? School committee and. And the other, and the retreat. Are these things that we move on now or do we attach into our next agenda?
Or could we commit to a date on the retreat and cover all those issues?
I'm, I'm sure there's more content from a retreat standpoint, but those were top of mind coming from the polls.
I, I don't have a date in mind right now, I don't know if you wanna put that on a future agenda item?
So we will have, you know, typically in June, we have our policies and strategies retreat. I think you are talking about something else. We are working on a proposal on the growth management plan per the current policies and strategies. Are we going to be ready to have a retreat on that between now and June? I'm not sure, we'll certainly be ready to have an agenda item on that between now and June. I think if you wanna have a retreat, probably the best way to do, best thing to do is to. Set a meeting and then we can assign some of these bigger topics to that meeting.
I guess the question in my mind, and I, I think retreat makes a lot of sense, I would. Honestly think of it more as a working session where the council has an opportunity to. Not burden you Jesse with prepared documents, prepared work, but for us to have more of a. Conversation amongst ourselves without a prepared agenda to batter around some of these things.
Yes.
And I, I think that would be really valuable.
I'd agree with that, yeah.
And I agree too, and I, and I think the sooner we, we have that, the more benefit we get out of it in terms of how it drives our work and agenda. The whole year.
I agree with that. Well, Tim, do you and Elizabeth feel onboarded well enough to be able to do that now?
Jesse will have to work with us on that, that's all I can say, you know. The councillors. Look at, look at for the practice she made with YouTube last year.
Are we looking at dates now or are we?
Don't, I mean, you're only thinking about May?
March, April?
Yeah, I, I would almost say mid, mid April.
Mid April, I could do, March is pretty well spoken for.
Yeah, mid April.
Yeah, how about the, your first week of April, the second week of April maybe?
I'm going the second week of April. I'm back on the ninth.
Back on the ninth?
I'm back on the ninth, I could do the tenth.
We could do the tenth, I could do the eleventh.
April tenth is good for me.
Maybe, but that would be like fifteen minutes, I have the finance community meeting till nine o'clock, so if it could start at nine thirty, are we gonna do it in the afternoon or what?
We could do it at ten.
Tim, what works for you? You, I mean, you, you're still full time, right?
She's got meetings too.
Does ten o'clock work with you?
Sorry, are you waiting on me?
Yeah, well, yeah, do you?
You want, you're talking about during a day retreat.
Yeah, yeah.
Interesting, no, well, depends on the day.
April tenth?
April tenth at ten I can do.
Okay, do this just set it tentatively for that at this point?
How, how long are you anticipating for scheduling?
Six hours.
Well, yeah, we have to have lunch, yeah, so ten, ten till noon.
Ten till noon sounds right?
Yeah.
Yeah? Yeah.
So would it make sense? When, if Jesse, you could send a confirmation out that, that each of us could maybe offer some suggestions as to what we'd wanna cover at a retreat? And we can kind of hone in on a two-hour. Agenda or platform?
You want me to send something out or you want to just me to collect ideas?
When you confirm the meeting that we could give some feedback. You've done that before when. We've had the policy retreat where we've, we've offered suggestions of what might be covered there.
Sure.
Does that make sense to everybody?
As opposed to just creating an agenda page and letting us put stuff on it so she doesn't have to do it?
Six of one half doesn't have another. I think, I mean, if you all are on board with it, I think we can pretty much confirm it now.
Yeah.
Three oh one is available, I think that's the best place to do it, we will have to record it, broadcast it, all of those things. So feel free to send me ideas and I will put those together.
Any other business? Will we, we need a special motion.
I move that the city council enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing the evaluation of a public officer or employee specifically. The city manager inviting Jesse Baker into session with council for discussion.
Can we have the first part of the executive session just among council?
I didn't understand what you said, Andrew, say it again.
Can we have the first part of the session just among council?
Oh, okay, yes, yeah, we, I, that's okay, is that okay with the council?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll text you, alright, okay.
And should we indicate we will not come out?
Yeah, we're not gonna come back after the, this session is over, yeah. So we have a motion on the table, do we have a second? Alright, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, okay, thank you and good night, everybody. Aye, it's unanimous, okay, thank you, and good night, everybody.
I'm gonna sit here and plan a council.